I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland.
Hey, Black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, there's difference between Black Star Network and black owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black owned media and be skate.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Hey folks, today is Thursday, March 23rd, 2023. Coming up, I'm Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network. I am live in Chicago where I am doing several book signings for my book, White Fear: How the Browning of America Is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. In the wake of George Floyd's death, many people all across the country, many corporations and cities, focus on diversity, equity, inclusion. Well, in Minneapolis, there's a huge fight brewing where a sister says the city has been totally, has totally disregarded DEI. We're going to talk about what's going on there. We'll talk with her and the accusations she is leveling, showing a complete dismissal of the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Manhattan DA is simply saying no to the House GOP who wants him to testify. Alvin Bragg says they're too busy investigating Donald Trump as opposed to comply with Congress. And Jim Jordan will tell you what that drama is all about as well. Plus, chaos erupts during the California school district workshop, Critical Race Theory will show you the racism that unfolded. Folks, and also, South Carolina women's basketball coach Dawn Staley decided to sports in history during the Gamecoats' most recent game, she saluted HBCU-Cheney State. Folks, it's time to bring the funk. Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network. Let's go. The death of George Floyd took place three years ago, folks, in the city of Minneapolis. And the person who was in charge of DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion there, says the city simply is ignoring the reality of racism there. Tystia Green, the former director of Minneapolis Division of Race Equity and Inclusion and Belonging for the City of Minneapolis, says city officials there lack the commitment to address systemic racism under Minneapolis City Operations Officer Heather Johnston. Now, Green was hired in 2022, just 20 minutes before a news conference about Amir Locke, the black man who was killed by police attempting to serve a no-knock warrant. In a scathing 14-page memo, she highlighted the challenges she faced in her role and how her recommendations were repeatedly ignored, intentionally misguided on assignments, and had false claimants filed against her. She also called out two black council members, Latricia Vitale and Andrea Jenkins, for lying about their lack of work and engaging in anti-black racism. Tystia Green joins us right now on Roland Martin Unfiltered. Ms. Green, glad to have you here on the show. And so, when you talk about the lack of commitment, look, we've been very critical here about all of these corporations and cities and others not being serious about diversity, equity, and inclusion. How long did it take for you to discover that clearly Minneapolis, in your estimation, was not serious about DEI?
I think it only took the first day, Roland. The first day that I was on the job, they sent me to my office, which was windowless and mouse-infested. So, the first day, I knew that they weren't serious about racial justice. The first month was when the MDHR findings came out, the Minnesota Department of Human Rights findings. And then after that was the same day was the CCO demand letter from the employees saying, hey, Minneapolis, y'all are racist towards black employees. And there were like 60 employees that went to the confirmation hearing of Heather Johnston to explain to city council that she was, in fact, racist towards them. So, it didn't take long at all.
So, what was interesting to me in terms of what you just laid out there. When you wrote this memo, what was the reaction? What did they say? Was there a meeting? Did they say, hey, let's address your concerns?
They didn't respond. I sent that memo on March 6th. And on March 13th, I got a call from Heather Johnston, my direct supervisor, saying that I would have to be unappointed or I would have to resign. I didn't hear from anyone that I sent that memo to. I sent it out.
I'm sorry. What does, I'm sorry, what does unappointed means?
The position that I held in Minneapolis was an appointed position. So, it's a city official position, and it's appointed by Mayor Fry.
Okay, so, were they saying, hey, either you resign or we're going to fire you?
Yes, that's exactly what they were saying. Either you resign or we're going to fire you. A week, exactly a week after I sent that memo.
Which option did you take?
I took the option to let my resignation of February 21st stand. So, on February 21st, I did resign my position citing the racism and toxic work environment and the sabotage of the black expo that I put on. I was asked to reconsider that resignation. And about six hours after discussions with the city of Minneapolis officials, I rescinded that resignation. So, when they called me on March 13th, they said, you can let your resignation stand from February 21st, or we have to fire you.
You were very critical of the two black council members. So, explain that.
Well, Roland, all skinfolk ain't kinfolk. And that is a situation that's happening in Minneapolis with Council President Jenkins and Council Member Vitale. Council Member Vitale, excuse me, has been going around the city in the community, defaming my character with black groups in the community in regards to this all-black expo that I was trying to put on for the city. The very first one in 2023 for Black History Month. Minneapolis has never done anything for Black History Month for the black community. And the first one that we do, Latricia Vitale is out there discrediting the event, saying that I owned, you know, the event planning company, that I paid myself $242,000, that I'm stealing money from the city. She started all of those lies within the community and within my workplace.
What happens now?
I'm going to live my life, Roland, but I'm going to make sure that the city of Minneapolis is held accountable for their toxicity and the racism in their enterprise.
Do you believe that, I mean, this was again, ground zero for so many people out here emphasizing and talking about DEI. Do you believe that this is indicative of the cities and corporations who, we already seen some 36% of DEI jobs have been cut across the country. So, it seems that a lot of people, just three years after the fact, are pulling back on all of those big pronouncements they made after the death of George Floyd?
Absolutely. There is definitely a backlash happening right now. You know how the pendulum swings when there's something, racial justice, we get something, and then the pendulum swings so far back that we're wiped back to where we were or worse than where we were before we started. And so, that's definitely happened around the country where people are taking back their commitment towards racial justice after the murder of George Floyd. And Minneapolis is no different. And with the leadership of Heather Johnston and Mayor Fry, I fear that Minneapolis will be worse off in racial justice than it was before George Floyd was even murdered.
Hold tight one second. I gotta go to break. When we come back, I'm going to read to you the response the city of Minneapolis sent us with regards to your allegations. Folks, you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network, live from Chicago. Don't forget, if you're watching on YouTube, hit the Like button. Facebook, hit the Share button. Also, please comment on our Black Star Network OTT app. Don't forget, you can download our app, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. If you're watching on Amazon TV, simply go to Amazon News and you can watch our 24-hour, seven-day-a-week black streaming channel right there on Amazon News. You can also say Alexa, play the Black Star Network to hear the audio from the show as well. And so, and don't forget, support us in what we do. Your dollars truly, truly make a huge difference in the stores that we cover. And so, please, send your check-in money orders to P.O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196, Cash App, Dollar Sign, RM Unfiltered, PayPal, R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo, RM Filtered, Zelle, Roland S. Martin.com, Roland Martin Unfiltered.com. We'll be right back.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, white nationalists rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their minds.
As an angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol with some shots.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at every university calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women. This is white fear.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're going to talk about it every day, right here on The Culture with me, Faraji Mohammed, only on the Black Star Network.
You want me to do something crazy, but I don't know what to do. I'd rather just sit here.
I'm Chrisette Michelle, and you're watching.
Roland Martin, unfiltered. I mean, could it be any other way? Really? It's Roland Martin.
All right, folks, welcome back to Roland Martin Unfiltered. So, we reached out to the city of Minneapolis, and this is what they sent us with regards to the allegations of Tystia Green. The city disagrees with the characterization of the events outlined in the memo you shared in the news article. Many city staff worked tirelessly to make this expo a success, and it's disappointing to see them publicly criticized for their hard work on behalf of Minneapolis and its residents. The city is deeply aware of the toll structural racism takes on our residents, businesses, and workforce. The mayor and city council took steps to advance racial equity during the 2022 budget cycle by elevating the former division into the Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Department. In doing so, the city enhanced the influence and stature of this work in the city enterprise. The city backed up its department creation by investing nearly $800,000 more than for the 2023 budget in the prior year in increasing staffing capacity. Over the last several years, city leadership has also worked to build a more inclusive workplace and embed equity in policy and practice. Just this year, the mayor allocated significant funding to develop anti-racist training curricula. And the city has already partnered with third-party experts to deliver anti-racist training sessions to city leadership. The city has also reformed its procurement processes in the last year to prioritize local vendors within the Target Market Program. We have taken and will continue taking concrete steps to support the black community, especially when planning large-scale community events. The city auditor is undertaking a review of procurement processes underpinning the production of major events. As stewards of public funds, it's important the city follow processes that ensure public funds have public benefit, even if those processes can be complex. Ms. Green's memo is under review, and professional staff will determine whether further investigation is required. The city has a process for assessing and investigating allegations of discrimination and harassment and is an equal opportunity employer that prohibits discrimination and harassment of any kind. All employment decisions are based on merit, performance, competence, qualifications, job requirements, and departmental need without regard to race, color, sex, including pregnancy or gender identity, religion or belief, national origin, sexual orientation, marital or parental status, disability, age, political affiliation, membership in an employee organization, military service, genetic information, or any other legally protected status or characteristic. Ms. Green, how would you respond to that statement put out by the city of Minneapolis to your memo?
I think it's funny that they are taking credit for the work that I put in. And I also think it's funny that they are claiming that they increased my budget by $800,000 when most of my projects on my staff are multimillion-dollar projects. So, $800,000, they know, will not cover anything that I'm doing within the racial equity realm. The other thing, though, there was another thing that you said about them elevating my department to, my division to a department. When I was working at the city of Burlington and they offered me this position 20 minutes before the Amir Locke presentation or press conference, I put in my counter offer that this position had to be a department head. I had to be the leader of an actual department. That was already solidified before I even got on the plane to come back home to Minneapolis. So, I just think it's funny that they're putting in that information into their response.
What is next for you?
Roland, I plan to hold the city accountable. I put this memo, I put this memo out as the leader of that department, as the expert in this city to say what we are doing as an enterprise is wrong. And there are several examples of why it's wrong and how it's wrong. So, I'm calling on Jacob Fry, I'm calling on Heather Johnston to do something, even though I called those people out within the memo. I attached the HR director, hey, I need you to investigate this. So, the investigations that they're talking about that's happening right now, I called for those a week before they fired me. So, I feel like I'm still going to hold them accountable for what they're doing. Minneapolis is a big machine. It's a big beast. And they're using their political and economic power to try to destroy me and try to silence me, but they won't. They will not. I will speak out about this. I will tell the world what they're doing in Minneapolis, the home of the murder of George Floyd, and how they continue to perpetuate not only systemic racism, but outright blatant racism every single day for the black employees inside of that enterprise. And then after that, Roland, I'm just going to live my life.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Roland. Thank you for having me.
Bringing my pal, Dr. Greg Carr, Department of African American Studies, Howard University, host of The Black Table on the Black Star Network, Reese Colbert, founder of Black Women Views also, has her own show every Saturday on Sirius XM Radio, Lauren Victoria Burke, who writes for the NMPA. Glad to have all three of you here. Reese, I want to start with you. I mean, this, and look, people have heard, I'm sorry, my apologies. Erica Savage, founder of Reframed Brain, my bad, read that wrong. Sorry about that, Erica. So, Erica, I'll start with you. This is a thing that I had been focused on, and it has been sort of driving me crazy. And I keep trying to explain to people that, and again, whether you believe what Ms. Green says or not, I'm speaking overall about this DEI thing. I literally was at a private luncheon here in Chicago where I was signing copies of the book, and I was talking about how most of DEI is bullshit. And if you look at the trajectory of the history to understand the whole deal, there were positions in the 70s. And if you read Ellis Coz's amazing book, The Rage of a Privileged Class, he talks about African-Americans who were stuck in vice president for community affairs jobs. These were the Negroes who were sent to black events to hold up large checks in small amounts. You go into the 80s and 90s, and then it became the chief global diversity officer or the head of diversity. And then, now all of a sudden, with DEI is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the reality is, even with the DEI jobs, 75% of all DEI jobs in America are white. So, even in that job, which is supposed to be about diversifying corporate America, they still white. And so, what this is, is it is a nationally, it is a, which is why, again, why I'm here signing copies of my book, White Fear, it is white culture dominating, white viewpoints dominating. And they still are not serious about this idea of diversity, equity, and inclusion and making sure that we have a piece of the pie. the pie.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. And that's the way that they've always wanted it to be, right? And you were talking about that number. I was reading something closer to 80% that chief diversity officers are largely white men. So when we're now starting to hear more about diversity, equity, inclusion, we can just think back to a clip that you played a couple of weeks ago, where we had a lawmaker from my home state of Georgia using D E and I in an inflammatory way to say that the train derailment that happened in Ohio was because of D E and I funding that was not provided for the train, which absolutely makes no sense. But we see these terms woke, we see the bastardization of these words in a way to really get the base riled up. It is a way to get those people who understand that the numbers are shrinking, that we're getting closer to 2040, 2050, when the demographics will shift, when there will be a white minority and a people of color majority. And so they are throwing as much gas, as much fuel as they can to the fire to make the shrinking base more upset and more aggressive towards any efforts that would actually make the country work better. So what Ms. Green has shared, unfortunately, with regards to an appointed position at the local level, and this is why, again, people should be involved in what is happening in their city. I'm thinking that not knowing what happened during the proceedings of bringing up this event to let the community know that these things were happening, that if there were enough ears to the ground, that there could have been pushback to ensure that not only was the event held at a proper time, but that it was in fact successful. And this is what we mean by holding people accountable. So we have to pay attention to these hot-button issues because these are things that flamethrowers continue to flow in order to make people more scared, but also bring the base out to vote.
Lauren Burke, the city released, they said, released a report, and they said that there was an investigation into all of this, and they said that, that they cannot substantiate the allegation she made against Heather Johnson. The city released a 22-page investigation report conducted by the Green Espe law firm with regards to the allegation of the racist and toxic work environment. And then they said that some of the concerns were addressed. The thing that I keep, again, just trying to tell people over and over and over again, that the problem that we have here is that if you want to truly confront and deal with this issue, you have to deal with what is structural, and you have to deal with who is in power. That's what it boils down to. Who is in power?
Yeah, well, yeah, you'd have to deal with structure and of course, power, but also a lot of what was in that statement that was given to you with regard to Ms. Green, these are quantifiable things. You know, when you see in statements, language like, we have donated significant funding, or we've done this or that with no numbers attached to it, you know, something is probably wrong because obviously with the government, everything is quantifiable. The amount of people hired, the amount of budget resources and money that goes to a specific department is all quantifiable. Obviously, Ms. Green correctly pointed out that if you're not the director of something, you know, it's effectively meaningless, which it is. And of course, at most of these jobs in government, if you have no budget and you're not in charge of hiring and firing, then you're not really in charge of anything. So these D E I things are really just a PR move for the most part in a lot of these offices, to be able to say that they can point to a certain office and say, we've hired this person, this is the D E I person, so we can't possibly be racist because we have the D E I person. Of course, none of that is true. We know that. We know the history of this country. We know how hard it is for the majority, the white majority in this country to deal with the history of this country when it comes to black people and discriminating against black people. That all plays into this. And now politically on the political side, the Republicans are using D E I as a proxy for, hey, white people, you know, these black people are getting something or are going to get something, a job, a benefit, or whatever, that are not qualified. So sort of a proxy for saying quota or that quota is about to happen. Of course, it doesn't matter that none of that is true. If you can message it and get it into a newspaper or get it into a media platform, it's true whoever reads it, and that's the end of the story.
Hold on one second. I'm going to break. We come back, Greg. I want to read for you. That was, I made a comment on the LinkedIn page of the chief diversity officer for PepsiCo today that you might find interesting, and I want to get a comment on that and this issue as well. Folks, you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered, live from Chicago, right here on the Black Star Network. Back in a moment.
On the next A Balanced Life with me, Dr. Jackie, reentry anxiety. A lot of us are having trouble transitioning in this post-pandemic society and don't even realize it. We are literally stuck between two worlds, in purgatory. How to get out of purgatory and regain your footing and balance.
What emotions they're feeling and being able to label them, because as soon as you label an emotion, it's easier to self-regulate. It's easier to manage that emotion.
On the next A Balanced Life on Black Star Network.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people-powered movement.
With a lot of stuff that we're not getting, you get it, and you spread the word.
We wish to plead our own cause. Too long have others spoken for us. We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it.
This is about covering us.
Invest in black-owned media.
Your dollars matter.
We don't have to keep asking them to cover our stuff.
So please, support us in what we do, folks.
We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month, raise $100,000. We're behind 100,000, so we want to hit that. Y'all money makes this possible.
Check some money orders go to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. The Cash App is Dollar Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland S Martin dot com.
You want me to do something crazy, but I don't know what to do. I'd rather just sit here.
Hi, this is Cheryl Lee Ralph, and you are watching Roland Martin Unfiltered. I mean, could it be any other way? Really? It's Roland Martin.
All right, folks, welcome back to Roland Martin Unfiltered here on the Black Star Network. So Greg, today, Tina Begalki, actually it was yesterday, who was the chief diversity officer at PepsiCo, posted this comment, posted this item on LinkedIn that I responded to, and said, "At PepsiCo, we're continuing to raise the bar on talent and diversity. By being intentional, it was great to sit down with Simon Mainwaring to discuss our D E I strategy partnerships, programs, and policies that help us build on our rich history. We are on a journey, and I am hashtag PepsiCo proud of our work to advance this critical effort to ensure everyone at PepsiCo feels valued, heard, and supported." Read more on this great conversation with Simon in Forbes. Well, I mean, I saw that, and the article's headline was PepsiCo pours intentionality into its D E I, D E and I efforts. And I responded, Greg, by saying, well, what is that strategy? I've had zero success in dealing with PepsiCo. This is the same company that signed on as a founding sponsor of Quibi, along with many others, and they had zero metrics, no proven track record, and they shut down six months after they launched. Quibi sold out their $150 million inventory and had no data to show. PepsiCo would never give millions of ad dollars to a black-owned startup. All I've gotten is empty meetings with PepsiCo, and I have a proven track record, successful show, and the only black news and information digital channel. My frustration is echoed by me in the black-owned media space. We're tired of press releases, panel discussions, and social media posts. Success with D E I is judged by only one metric, direct deposits that help black-owned media scale up. I'll be happy to discuss this further with your team. See, Greg, I'm not into the performative. It's what are you doing? Where's our money? Hashtag where's our money? Hashtag black economic social justice.
Roland, I mean, I think Lauren has framed this. This is all performance. When you say diversity, equity, inclusion, you're talking about performance. In fact, I don't know about, but maybe define it in a split second, but the most recent issue of Forbes magazine has Melanie Hobson on the cover, and it's talking about diversity and equity inclusion in the C suites, in the corporate suites. And she's got a project that she has launched to increase that. Hey, that's great. Let me add very quickly, performance. How does that benefit the masses of black folk? When you start talking about a black-owned, black rhyme, black content, progressive, liberation, grounded, black media unit, that's not something they're going to fund without pressure. And so, you know, of course, they're not going to respond to you. The only way they're going to respond to you is when we respond to you in enough numbers to scare them. They got scared three years ago. They got scared two years ago when people out in the streets. And we know that Andrea Jenkins, who was the council chair there in Minneapolis, she was one of the nine council members who voted to pledge to defund the police and use that money for public safety. Very quickly walked that back after, as Angela Porter, who's from that area, who's been on the black table many times, causing crying Jacob Frye, the mayor of Minneapolis, who was so contrite in the wake of the George Floyd murder, vetoed a proposition to defund the police. And those council members had to, there he is crying Jake. But again, they're not going to do anything you don't force them to do. Now, Sister Green, I think, is a victim of several things. Number one is activists typically don't get D E I jobs. She, as she mentioned, was in Burlington, Vermont for two years before she came home to Minnesota to take this job. And she left that job, and in the wake of that said, you know, she didn't feel supported in that job. Well, guess what, sis? No, you weren't supported. You weren't going to be supported. And so these same two sisters, Andrea Jenkins and Vita, who was on the board, on the council that she talked about in her memo, who voted to support that $435,000 investment in this festival, in this event, this Black History Month event that they had. Well, you're probably not good, you're not going to get any staff support to put it on. You're not going to get any support from the city because it's a window dressing job. But there are people in Minneapolis, small business owners who lost money, people in the community. My question would have been to her is, having been in a job like this in Vermont for two years, you know, don't you know when you go in, you're not going to have any support? What is your strategy to connect with the people who are swinging with both fists in Minneapolis and in St. Paul, and they've been doing it for years? This is, you gotta have guerrilla warfare in these situations. You've given us the model. You're not waiting on these people to give you the advertising dollars, even as you implore us to support you so you can do that battle. Meanwhile, you do the work. You do the work. I think we often miss in these diversity.
To the point that Greg just made there, Erica, and it's simple. Pressure, so it's very interesting. Pressure busts pipes. Pressure creates diamonds. The reality is, none of this is going to change unless we understand we have to apply pressure. This is not about being nice. This is not about being wonderful. This is not about sitting here presenting resumes. It is going to be pressure. And I would love, I would love for folks to say, oh, we did the right thing, and y'all followed the plans, everything like that. But my experience has been, this is what it's going to require. And the thing about this is this here, just like I made about the woman at PepsiCo. Okay, you're the head of D E I. You say that it's an imperative, it's important from the CEO. Prove it. And what we're talking about here, look at professional services, again, John Rogers, Aero Capital, has been talking about this here. We talk about professional services. We talk about the studies that have been done showing the money these companies are spending on law firms, on bond firms, and on and on and on. Not just construction. They are spending millions upon millions, and we're getting locked out. And I keep saying, I keep saying to black people, we cannot be silent about it. And this is what I also keep saying to our black civil rights organizations, specifically the NAACP, National Urban League, Ribbon Chargers National Action Network, Rainbow Push Coalition, and all of them. I don't care who you are. When we are targeting corporations, business folk need to be leading the negotiations, and the civil rights groups operate as the allies, because the business folks, we think, we think in terms of multiple millions and billions. So Wells Fargo recently announced a $50 million commitment or donation to the NAACP. If Wells Fargo is giving $50 million to the NAACP, Wells Fargo should be doing $5 billion in business with black businesses and black companies. I'm not trying to play small ball here, Erica. I'm trying to deal with numbers that could dramatically change our community.
Yeah, and to Greg and Lauren's point, I think the key word is not only performance, but window dressing. And I think that we've seen this story enough, we've read about it enough to know how this goes. We saw how tech companies made lofty pledges right after the George Floyd murder, and we saw that many of those pledges went unfulfilled, but that's not a surprise. You know, I've talked about this, this three-pronged effort, and you just touched on it, Roland. We have to have people that are on the ground. We have to have people that are in the ear, talking to people in the community. We have to have the power at the ballot box. And then as trillionaires, we have to exercise our economic power to drive the direction of what the change is that we want to see happen. And until we're operating and firing on all those three cylinders, we're going to see more of the same. The game of disappointment should really be over. We already know what is going to happen. And so to have people continue to play these games, to play with our emotions, so to speak, is really at a loss for us, and it makes bigger business for other communities and institutions. So at this point, we are at a place where we have to make a decision as a community, as a people, as institutions, as enterprises, as Ms. Green put it, how are we going to go forward? Are we going to go forward bending to the almighty dollar? Are we going to walk forward in the power that we absolutely have through that three-pronged effort?
You know, Lauren, as I sit here and think about it, when I look at all these commitments, when I look at these announcements that folk made, I'm going, okay, what's the Wendy's commercial? Where's the beef? Because at the end of the day, I'm not interested in your grants. I want to know what are you doing? And for instance, I mean, I saw the Forbes article. PepsiCo, PepsiCo announced they're going to place, they're going to, over the next five years, put $570 million into black banks and Hispanic banks. Great. That's banks. Now, let's do all the other categories. And see, and I need our people. I need everybody, people who are watching, Lauren, and I, and I look, and I hear the folk, oh, man, all you sitting here is caring about yourself. No, we got to be able to change the economic paradigm of existing dollars. Because guess what? Wells Fargo wants us banking there. PepsiCo wants us drinking their products. McDonald's, Burger King, Taco Bell, they want us eating their products. PepsiCo wants us buying their chips and things along those lines. And so what I'm saying to black America, we are sitting here, investing in these companies with our purchasing power. We have got to switch the mentality and begin to understand that if we're sending money out and money is not coming back, then we ain't changing nothing.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few things there, Roland. One, you already hit on, which is that when black leaders, in my case, what I've observed is usually black elected officials are sitting at a table, doing any sort of negotiation that involves money coming in and out of the community, and that could be anything in the community. It could be a business, it could be a casino, it could be a lot of things. It really is important, cannot say this enough, and this is obvious but needs to be said, that the person sitting at that table understands the details of business deals and the amounts of money that one can demand when some company wants to come into a specific community and do something. And a lot of times, these are black communities. Recent example, actually, was Portsmouth, Virginia, and Petersburg, Virginia, where they're figuring out if they want to have a casino, and Richmond, Virginia, all places where there are a lot of black leaders who are sitting at the table on city council, mayors, et cetera, and so on. And if you don't have somebody at that table when that negotiation happens, that is specifically making specific demands about where that money is going to go, when that money starts getting made at a place like a casino, but it could be another business as well, there are going to be big mistakes, multimillion-dollar level mistakes, and it happens all the time. Because typically, people who come into elected office are not typically businesspeople who deal with millions and millions of dollars. And that type of mistake has happened in the black community a lot. And that, that type of mistake has happened in the black community a lot on big levels. And, you know, it can't be said enough that money and leverage that we have in the community with our buying power has got to be somewhere in the conversation. And it all really comes down to who leads that conversation in the moment of truth in some meeting someplace. And I cannot tell you how many times these types of issues have been messed up by people who took poli sci at some liberal arts, art school instead of taking, you know, the MBA class or a business class. And they end up in elected office as the mayor or somebody in the state senate or whatever it is, having absolutely no idea what they're doing in a business discussion. And that has cost the community, that's cost the black community millions and millions of dollars. And people like Maynard Jackson and Marion Barry, I mean, people need to study some of these leaders who knew how, knew what they were doing at the table, particularly Maynard Jackson. And so that's been a huge, a huge issue on this.
Hold on one second, go to a break and I want to come back and talk about this here. And I know some, I know folks who are watching and somebody might be saying, man, it's a lot of other news to talk about. I'm going to say this again, and I want y'all to understand this. If you are not having a money conversation, you're not having an American conversation. You're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network.
Coming up on the next Black Table, a conversation with Professor Howard W. French on his new book, Born in Blackness, covering 600 years of global African history and helping us understand how the world we know today is a gift from black people.
There could have been no West without Africa and Africa.
That's on the next Black Table with me, Greg Carr, only on the Black Star Network.
On the next, A Balanced Life with me, Dr. Jackie, reentry anxiety. A lot of us are having trouble transitioning in this post-pandemic society and don't even realize it. We are literally stuck between two worlds in purgatory. How to get out of purgatory and regain your footing and balance.
What emotions they're feeling and being able to label them because as soon as you label an emotion, it's easier to self-regulate. It's easier to manage that emotion.
On the next, A Balanced Life on Black Star Network.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're going to talk about it every day right here on The Culture with me, Faraji Mohammed, only on the Black Star Network.
I'm Deborah Owens, America's Wealth Coach, and my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
Hi, I'm Israel Horton with Israel and New Breed.
What's up, what's up? I'm Dr. Ricky Dill, the choir master.
Hey, yo, peace, bro. What's going on, celeb king of R&B, Raheem Devon?
All right, welcome back to Roland Martin Unfiltered. So here's, I need people to listen. I need, I need the people to listen to what I'm about to tell you. In the wake of the death of George Floyd, black institutions across the board saw a dramatic increase of donations. Black Lives Matter, $90 million, NAACP upwards of $150 million, $100 million to the National Urban League, and other, I mean, NAACP Legal Defense Fund, Law's Community for Civil Rights Under Law, all of these groups, HBCUs. I mean, we could go on and on and on. But I need people to listen to me when, when I give you some numbers. A lot of y'all got bent out of shape with the $90 million that was given to Black Lives Matter. Man, what, what, what they doing with the money? But y'all did not have that same fervor when corporate America actually committed anywhere from 50 to 60 billion in the wake of social justice. Let me repeat that. Lot of y'all have smoke for Black Lives Matter. But y'all were silent about the 50 to 60 billion. But you had a lot of smoke for the 90 million. See, it's interesting to me, Greg, and this is to the, the point that Lauren just made there is, is a critical, critical point. If we are going to change this, this paradigm, you, you've got to have people sitting at the table. You've heard me say this while I keep saying to these HBCUs, damn it, stop letting people negotiate media rights deals. Stop letting them negotiate pouring rights deals. Stop letting people negotiate apparel deals. And all you end up with is merchandise and social media posts and not millions of dollars when Michigan, Texas, Texas A&amp;M, Ohio State are pulling down crazy amounts of money. Stop letting companies come to HBCU campuses with various initiatives and dangle internships when what they, what HBCUs should be doing is extracting millions of dollars in investment into their programs. We have got to have people sit, to sit at the table who understand how to negotiate big numbers as opposed to what we have is, in too many cases, big egos. Absolutely. I think that last part, what you just said there really brings it all home. We have to be able to do that, but that means there has to be a we. There is no we, brother. Segregation forced us into a we. So, you know, it's interesting when you look at HBCU boards of directors, boards of trustees and so forth. Prior to the end of apartheid, many of these people were business people in black communities. Many of these people were people who knew how to build a business, run a business and deal with black people. They loved black people, but let's be quite frank, they were also relying on black people prior to the end of apartheid. What we see today is individual Negroes, many of them pets and successes in the white world. If you look at corporate America, according to this recent Forbes magazine article, the Standards and Poor Top 500, maybe 85% of Standards and Poor Top 500 companies in the United States have some black representation on their boards of directors, but about 3.2% of those companies have blacks in senior executive roles. So they sprinkle a little diversity, equity, inclusion, but it doesn't do anything for us. See, when you looking at a Roland Martin, you're looking at somebody who is a successful businessman, but also has a mentality that you're trying to do something for the race. We can't make the assumption that these individuals are trying to do something for the race. Even when they're trying to do something for the race, they're doing it in a capitalist system. You're absolutely right. You're talking about America, you're talking about the world system, you're talking about capitalism. And guess what capitalism doesn't do? It doesn't do charity for people who might be an actual competition for it. So, I mean, I was talking to my students today about the WNBA. They were saying, oh, you know, WNBA, why don't people support WNBA? I said, have y'all ever heard of ABL? They said, no. I said, look it up. And in that room, what they found was there was a professional league where the owners were trying to make partners with the players and make them part owners and move this together. And David Stern and the criminal enterprise known as the National Basketball Association put the ABL out of business, even though they subsidized the WNBA for years at a loss because they could not afford to have an independent entity taken away from their captive market. See, the American Negro loves their master. And because you love your master, you won't turn around and support something like Black Star Network, which means the people have to support it. Woodson taught us this lesson. I'll end with this. This is the Forbes magazine I was talking about with Melody Hobson on the cover, capitalism for all. Well, guess what? That's an oxymoron. She says, people talk about access to capital, but access to customers may be more important. Yeah, especially when you got individual Negroes trying to create beautiful graphics and lost leaders to bring our people into the white capitalist structure. And where is Melody Hobson's check for Black Star Media? Where is Robert Smith's check for Black Star Media? Where is, what's the boy's name that tried to flip the civil rights act of, you know, the guy who's now beating for BET with Diddy and Tyler Perry? What's his name? Oh, yeah, you're from Byron Allen. Where is his check? These people are playing capitalism. There is no we. But when they get in trouble, that's when they come for the we. We got a, we got a, we, I don't give a damn if it's any black people in corporate America. If it's three of them there and nothing happens for us and all you're doing is creating shake your jingle leg jingles so that a few more Negroes can give up the last three cent in their pocket to Pepsi and Target and everywhere else, then we don't need you. What we need to do is support our own. And if you're not supporting us in these diversity, equity positions you get yourself in, I agree with you, Lauren. Turn your back on them. We have to organize. This is a very different kind of capitalism because capitalism don't. And, and this is also why these black folks who are sitting on these boards of directors, why are you there? White. Black folks fought for you to get these positions, but what are you doing while you are there? Why, why are we having to beat the door down to get black-owned media advertising when, when every single one of these boards has a black board member? They, they should say, that is my mission sitting on this board. And let me, let me address the point because John talks about this notion of access to capital versus access to consumers. Y'all, this is real simple. Roland doesn't need access to capital. Let me, let me say that again, because I need everybody to listen to what I'm saying. We are in the black. We are profitable. I don't want a loan. Come on, brother. I want contracts. See, if I get contracts, I don't need loans. Loans, I gotta pay back. If I get contracts, then I'm still able to pay folk. Y'all, if we get more contracts, we don't need lines of credit. The lines of credit simply allows us to be able, if the company is going to be paying on a 180-day term, six months, well, the line of credit allows me to pay my expenses while the money is coming in. The problem, contracts. And that's, if y'all want to understand why we keep having all these other conversations happening in black America, it's because we are being frozen out of the economic pie. And so they want access to black consumers. They want access to black pocketbooks. They want access to black minds. They want to hire black people to be creative, to produce the ad. Listen, I'm going to say this again. They want to hire black people to create the ads, to get black people to buy more things, but they don't want to run the same ads that black people create on black-owned media. So please, you tell me what that is called. We call that share cropping.
Mama?
They understand that. They understand who's in charge.
I'm just trying to get y'all to understand. But, but, but again, we have to have the courage to challenge them saying, where's the return on investment? Folks, I am, so here's the deal. I am headed out. I'm headed to a meeting with my frat brother, Don Thompson, the former CEO of McDonald's, who is doing some amazing things with his wife Liz, driving this issue as well. I was about to go meet with him. We've got a lot of other things that are happening. Greg Carr is going to take over the second hour of the show, folks. Don't leave. They got lots, we got lots more to talk about. Greg, Erica and Lauren are going to be here, hold it down. And so I'm doing double duty here. And so y'all keep watching the Black Star Network right here. We gonna keep educating, go keep trying to tell y'all, because everything I'm laying out to y'all ain't nothing but hardcore truth. And the reason they don't want to fund black-owned media, because they don't want this conversation to be had to the masses. I'm gonna see y'all tomorrow. Don't forget, my book signing is in Chicago, y'all. We are sold out. I might have to come back to Chicago. Literally, there's no room. The restaurant is completely sold out. Can't wait to be at Chemistry Chicago tomorrow night. Black-owned restaurant there in Hyde Park. I'll be back in a moment, y'all.
A lot of these corporations or people that are running stuff push black people if they're doing a certain thing. What that does is it creates a butterfly effect of any young kid who, you know, wants to leave any situation they're in. And the only people they see are people that are doing this. So I gotta be a gangster, I gotta shoot, I gotta sell, I gotta do this in order to do it. And this becomes a cycle, but when someone comes around and is making other, oh, we don't, you know, they don't want to push it or put money into it. So that's definitely something I'm trying to fix too, is just show there's other avenues. You don't got to be a rapper, you don't got to be a ball player, you can be a country singer, you can be an opera singer, you can be a damn whatever, you know? Showing the different avenues and that is possible. And it's hard for people to realize it's possible until someone does.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're going to talk about it every day right here on The Culture with me, Faraji Mohammed, only on the Black Star Network.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Good Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, A Balanced Life with Dr. Jackie.
I'm Angie Stone.
Hi, I'm Teresa Griffin.
Oh, Roland. Hey, Roland, I am so disappointed that you are not here, first of all. Where's our dance? It's like we get a dance in every time I see you. And so now you're not here for me to dance with, sir. You and your ascot. I need it. I need that in my life right now. Okay, I love you, Roland.
What's up? I'm Lance Gross and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
In our Black and Missing segment tonight, we are talking about Tevin Powell. Tevin Powell disappeared from his Louisville, Kentucky home on September the 18th, 2022. The 16-year-old is five feet, six inches tall, weighs 160 pounds, with black hair and brown eyes. Anyone with information about Tevin Powell should call the Louisville, Kentucky Metro Police Department Let's turn our attention to the state of New York. In fact, more specifically, the Isle of Manhattan and a brother who is making headlines because he's just doing his job, Alvin Bragg, who is, of course, the district attorney in Manhattan. The Manhattan DA's office tells three House GOP committee chairman to stay in their lane. Let's, uh, let's see now that we have writing on Alvin Bragg. General Counsel Leslie B. Dubec penned a letter to the representatives saying that the Republican chairman's request in an unprecedented inquiry into pending local prosecution. You've probably been looking at Jim Jordan and others who are trying to get Alvin Bragg to testify before Congress. Apparently, they don't understand how government works. Dubec's letter is in response to a letter that the GOP chairman sent to Bragg earlier this week, seeking information about the Trump case and federal funding for the DA offices that the DA office receives. She said that Bragg's office would not allow the congressional investigation to impede New York from them exercising, quote, "New York's sovereign police power." There we go. The right wing likes to talk about federalism, except when they want to use the federal government as a cudgel. She did inform them that they would repair, prepare a letter describing its use of federal funds. Bragg's office wants to meet with committee staff to understand the precise information they seek, which can be shared within, quote, "constitutional obligations." Lauren, you've covered the Hill, you've covered a lot of political backs and forths in many different state houses and federal state houses. What the hell is Jim Jordan them asking Alvin Bragg? And, and what, and how would you advise the Manhattan DA's office to respond to this?
Well, I don't know that they need any advice. Their, their, you know, their response was what I suspected it would be. As somebody who was born in the Bronx, it was not unfamiliar. I only wish that Robert Morgenthau was still alive. When I was a little kid, he was the DA of Manhattan in the 1970s. You know, I think he passed away just a few years ago in 2018, 2019. This is the type of outrageous, ridiculous, arrogant. Uh, this is the type of outrageous, ridiculous, uh, arrogant request that somebody like, uh, Robert Morgenthau would have really slammed down. I think, I think Alvin Bragg's office was being very polite. I know a lot of the, you know, media is like, ooh, it was a strong response. Well, I'll tell you what, if that was Cyrus Vance in there or Morgenthau, it would have been even stronger. Uh, there's this air with Jim Jordan and a lot of these, uh, Republicans that we have in Congress now of, you cannot boss us, you cannot tell us what to do. We tell you what to do, we tell you how it's gonna be, we dictate the pace, nobody can ever tell us anything. That was the same air, uh, that Donald Trump had, which is, you know, it is an arrogant vestige of white supremacy. This idea that how dare this black DA be telling us what to do? How dare we have to listen to his, you know, guidance in any way, shape or form? He's never gonna boss us. So they're flexing to their supporters, and they're sort of carrying this idea that nobody can ever tell us what to do. We, there is no authority over us. We get to tell Alvin Bragg to come hither. It is all complete nonsense, complete, unadulterated, clear nonsense. And they'll do it until somebody slaps them down, you know? Which is typically a court, or another lawyer, or somebody else in authority that understands this is all nonsense. But in fact, they do need to be slapped down, or they just get bigger and more bold and more arrogant. And that's what you just saw.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, it's interesting to hear you say that, uh, Lauren. Uh, certainly, they could be slapped down, and, and the voters that keep returning these people to office, even though they're doing nothing for their constituents, nothing for their districts. Jim Jordan hadn't passed a piece of legislation yet, and yet he's got time to do all this. You know, I'm wondering, Erica, as somebody who has literally worn the uniform of the United States and has been threatened, been put in harm's way to defend this country, I wonder if you have any thoughts about how this erodes the morale of people who have real needs in this country? And while they are waiting for people who they elected to return something to them by way of our tax dollars, they have to turn on the television, and sadly, some of them watch Fox and other places where they're deluded and they think these people are fighting for them, and they see this kind of shenanigans. Meanwhile, their lives continue to erode. I mean, you know, any thoughts on, on, on this back and forth, and what it does to people who are just trying, out here trying to live their lives and wondering why Congress never does anything in, in moments like this, except things like this?
Sure. Um, so to the first point, the question that you asked me, I think that this is kind of, um, the, really built into the fabric of this country, in that it goes to show that white nationalism is in fact global, and that the notion that it is supreme is definitely laughable. But when you talk about the uniform, I think that, you know, one of the things that I thought about with people that do serve in the military, most people that serve in the military are people that go to work, that's just a part of their job, that, um, they do serve sometimes in peacetime, but that in the event of war or active theater, that they are saying that they are available to go to whatever space that's necessary. But on the face of it, again, this is built into the fabric of the country, and I think that, you know, when we look at historically, over the past couple of elections, this is what Republicans have not only said that they would do, but they actually published pieces to say that this is what they're going to do. So it continues to go back to what, you know, what are we going to do in response to that? We can't just do anything that, you know, the son of a Klansman would go on to, uh, his social media channel of choice and use language like, um, calling, um, District Attorney Bragg an animal really is, goes, uh, you know, is par for the course. It goes back to what white nationalism is, and that it continues to be dogged in its, um, whole apparatus to, uh, make itself supreme, which it shall not, never will be, and won't be, and it, and it is, it isn't. So to people who are going about the business of working every day, a part of our work is to ensure that our present and our future has a better space than what we're facing right now. And it goes back to that three pond attack, but it also, um, does beg us to be more conscious about what we can do in some of the time that we do have available, because Republicans did promise this level of chaos. And so we've got another year and a half to go until, um, at least on the congressional side, uh, well, the House side, rather, to make a decision about who's gonna return to Congress. And unless people want to see more of the same, we're going to see the same thing unless we actually exercise some of the power that we have, or we don't have the ability to be on the ground, which is to go to the ballot box and ensure that, um, unless in cases of gerrymandering, that we are able to have individuals in the office, um, that, uh, do speak for us.
Absolutely. Well, let's turn, speaking of the ballot box, let's turn to elected officials in the extremely gerrymandered Magnolia State, Jackson, Mississippi. In Jackson right now, uh, there has been a commission put together, which has only one black lawmaker and nine whites, to negotiate the final version of a bill that would expand the territory of a state-run police department inside Mississippi's majority-black capital city. Lieutenant Governor Delbert Housman and House Speaker Philip Gunn, both Republicans, finished selecting the senators and representatives to work on the final versions of the bill. The committee has eight white Republicans, one white independent, and one black Democratic House Rep., Representative Earl Banks, as then a negotiator of Jackson. May have a little bit of a voiceover, but Mississippi's Republican-controlled state house passed the bill to expand areas patrolled by the state-run Capitol Police in, in Jackson, and create a new court system with appointed rather than elected judges. Now, Banks, of course, voted against the bill. The negotiators face a deadline to finish their work by next week. The Senate voted to expand Capitol Police territory to the entire city, but the House voted for an expansion only into relatively affluent shopping and residential areas. When we come back, when we come back, uh, from our break, we're going to, uh, ask Erica and Lauren their thoughts on this revived white citizens council in Mississippi as they try to take over the city of Jackson. So we'll be back in a moment here. You're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network. We'll be right back. Folks, Black Star Network is here.
I'm real, uh, revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Uh, thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland. Hey, black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, this difference between Black Star Network and black owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black owned media and be skate.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Coming up on the next Black Table, a conversation with Professor Howard W. French on his new book, Born in Blackness, covering 600 years of global African history, and helping us understand how the world we know today is a gift from Black people.
There could have been no West without Africa and Africa.
That's on the next Black Table with me, Greg Carr, only on the Black Star Network.
Hello, I'm Bishop T. E. J.
Hi, how you doing? It's your favorite funny girl, Amanda Seale.
Hi, I'm Anthony Brown from Anthony Brown and Group Therapy.
I'm Lana Wells, and you are watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
Welcome back to the Black Star Network. Remember to support the Black Star Network across all your platforms. Tell your friends to get in here now. We gotta support each other as we do this work. Uh, we just left the state of Mississippi. You know, this has been the station in the network that has covered this story more than anywhere else. We had the mayor of Jackson on, Cho'wee Lumumba, have had city council people on, have folk organizers who are on. Erica, thinking about this question of Jackson, and now they've, they've put this commission together. Of course, they were trying to get at the federal dollars for the water, to fix the water, and now here they are trying to create their police force inside the borders. Any thoughts on the implications of this, this kind of extreme measure of creating a, uh, insular white police force to guard the white neighborhoods? And then a civil court where they can get involved in other things, perhaps even like taking land, or whatever else they wanna busy themselves with in Jackson, Mississippi?
Yeah, white nationalism, and I'm glad you mentioned the white citizens council, because I thought about that, you know, after the landmark Brown v. Board of Education, and so you saw segregation is becoming very active, white nationalists. Um, but those types of councils didn't disappear, they just really kind of disseminated into other places. They're in our wells of Congress, they are executives, um, of state, um, they're all around, they're billionaires, uh, and they're poor as well. And so in thinking about Mississippi, you know, we do have, um, Ben Crump, who is also a friend of the show, um, young man Raheem Carter, who, um, his remains were found in different places. His spinal cord was found in one place and other remains in another place. Um, the, um, Attorney Crump is reporting that he was, um, allegedly reportedly decapitated. And so when we see, we've had another lawyer on to talk about two men that were essentially tortured, um, for 90 minutes, one that had to have his tongue surgically removed, um, and in effect that, uh, both of those men who were African-American men, who are African-American men, um, were found to be dating white women. So we continue to see these atrocities that seems like something that could been out of the 19th, 20th century and times before that, that are still happening. And it is because of Roland, uh, has laid out in his book, White Fear. We've been talking about the shrinking white minority, but you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about in terms of the ongoing water crisis that is happening in Jackson, Mississippi, is also the students of an HBCU there, Jackson State University. And so when we think about police presence, understanding what that has looked like, uh, for black people for centuries on end, as we have known them to be slave patrols, thinking about that student population, you know, i- is that population going to begin to, um, uh, disa-, um, you know, dis- disintegrate? Are we going to see Jackson State not be what Jackson State has been in the past because parents are in fear of sending their children there? Raheem Carter was a 25-year-old young man who ran to the police for help in fear of white men that were following him. So, you know, as we look at Mississippi and looking at it and what it is doing, it is also spreading a message, it is telegraphing a message of what a lot of people are wanting to see across these United States of America. So I think that, you know, as we continue to report on these stories, talk about these stories, these are things that people should be, um, no matter where they're living, what part of the country, as Malcolm X said, everything below the Canadian border is the South, no matter what era of the country that we find ourselves in, these are things that we should be looking at and being very, very concerned about seeing these things replicated, um, in our specific areas.
Absolutely. And it's funny you say that. I mean, people, parents worried about safety. We heard, uh, Mayor Lumumba say that, you know, Jackson State does not have its own water system, whereas they have created water systems for the hospital, for the district where the state house is in Mississippi, all of this being apartheid. And then there's the class element, Lauren. You know, it's interesting in the reports that, that we've been reading, um, Representative, uh, uh, Banks, who was on the commission, said, I've heard from doctors, I've heard from lawyers, I've heard from retired people, people want more protection than they have now. You know, how does class play a role in this? How does starving the city of resources? Jackson Police Department is terribly over, uh, burdened and short-staffed? I mean, wh- how can we govern in a black city surrounded by these white legislators who've just decided they're just gonna run amok until, as you said in the previous story, somebody stops them? How do we, how do we move through this and, and make some progress?
It's really difficult, particularly in Mississippi, because Mississippi is one of the poorest states, uh, in the United States. It's like 20% of Mississippi is below the poverty line. Uh, I'm really surprised that a lawsuit hasn't straightened some of this out over the years. That never seems to happen. Uh, the allocation of resources is obviously based on some sort of racist paradigm, and everybody can see it. You know, when you have in Mississippi, uh, 38%, almost 40% of the population is black, but in Jackson, it's like 80% black. And so it's a pretty amazing thing. I thought one of the most interesting things that you said in the read, in the open to the story that they're demanding, is this idea of appointed but not elected judges. Of course, you would have to want appointed and not elected judges when you have a population that's 80% black, because if the black people were making the decisions, which of course they're, you know, functioning in this world where that, that, of course, don't want that to happen, uh, they would have, of course, all the control over elected judges and any other elected officials for that matter. Uh, so there really isn't anything new here. I mean, this is Mississippi. This is the Mississippi of the 1920s, the 1930s, the 1800s. I mean, it's the same Mississippi it's always been. Uh, and, and other than the words, uh, from Nina Simone's song, Mississippi Goddamn, coming into my head, I really don't have that much of an answer for it. Uh, it just is, I've only been to Mississippi, I've been to Mississippi a few times, just going to Tunica for Benny Thompson's, uh, retreat, but other than that, I, I don't know too much about Mississippi, other than the history that we all know, uh, the reality that we all know, uh, uh, that has been, uh, some of the worst realities for African-Americans in the United States, something that is never completely faced, something that is never completely looked in the eye of. And, uh, the way it's going, we don't seem to be getting too much closer, getting them to look in the eye of their own history. Uh, so it just repeats itself, as I don't need to tell Dr. Carr, it repeats itself.
No, no, no. I mean, I, I think, I think you're right, Lauren. I mean, I've been Mississippi many times. I love flying into mega Everest Airport and, and sitting in, you, this history, you're surrounded by it. And we know that their history isn't in just books, the people fight. Uh, there's a new book, uh, Jackson Rising Redux, uh, Callie Acuna and Matt Meyer. We know that Mississippi is not going to take this land down, certainly not the black folk in the city and in the state. Uh, another sister who has been on these airways many times, uh, Rukia Lumumba, the sister of, uh, Cho'wee Lumumba, the mayor. Of course, their, their parents, of course, Nubia and Cho'wee Lumumba, the previous mayor, uh, they're gonna, they, 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 there will be lawsuits, there will be fights. In fact, both of them are lawyers, in fact, Cho'wee and, and Rukia. Um, let's move to another battleground for a few minutes. We're gonna go out to California. This is actually, since we've been talking about Mississippi, the south in my tongue would pronounce this Temecula Valley, but it might be Temecula Valley. But at any rate, the Cali, it's in California, and, uh, we're looking at, uh, critical race theory. We just saw what happens when black people speak publicly about critical race theory, and we also know that conservatives are trying their best to erase black history for the last few years. In fact, they've coined ban critical race theory, or as they might call it CRT, uh, which is not taught in grade schools, by the way, as their rallying cry. Well, during this year's Conservative Political Action Conference, also known as CPAC and some other names we won't repeat here, one woman clarified what she thought should be taught in schools.
Well, and I get very aggravated because I noticed the folks who push CRT do not seem to take the time to teach about Frederick Douglass, who was a great black founding father. They have erased the work of early black people in this country, Frederick Douglass, um, uh, Harriet Tubman, many of these things. We're not taught about them and their full, uh, capacity with the founders.
Right, so what we need to do is we need to get rid of this CRT nonsense and start teaching more about, what, Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, John Brown, the person who, uh, stole the Confederate ship? W. E. B. Du Bois, Marcus Garvey?
Yeah.
Malcolm X?
Yeah.
Martin Luther King?
Yeah.
Farrakhan, I mean, you know, the, the list goes on.
The list goes on.
It's crazy.
It is a robbery, uh, of both black and white children to not teach that history, because black children should be knowing that there were great black leaders that they can identify with, and, uh...
Yeah, it's like, no one, none of these kids know who Marcus Garvey is.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Now, uh, while we're, while we're letting that percolate, and, and, and our ally there doing the best he can, it's Du Bois, as Dr. Du Bois often reminded, not Du Bois. And the guy he couldn't name was Robert Smalls, who stole the ship, the Planter, in South Carolina and sailed that Confederate ship. Of course, came back as a congressman. But while we're letting that percolate, and maybe we'll get, uh, both of yours, uh, comments after the break, I wanna put this one on the table in the spirit of that. That wasn't from California, that was from CPAC a couple of weeks ago here in the DMV. But in California, uh, there was a brother who spoke up at a critical race workshop and was removed. Chaos and confusion, in fact, erupted during a California workshop about critical race theory. A black man who attended the workshop decided to speak up during the event to share his dismay with the board's decision to ban CRT, when it's not even taught in their classrooms.
Dear Temecula Valley School Board, I am writing to express my deep disappointment and disapproval of your recent decision to bring in a panel of so-called experts on critical race theory, CRT. It is widely recognized by the vast majority of experts that bringing CRT into the K-12 classroom is just as outlandish as bringing calculus to the first grade classroom. Neither idea is viable or credible. Therefore, it is asinine to ban CRT when it isn't even taught in any K-12 classroom in the United States of America. Your continued blatant, willful ignorance of the black experience in this country is not only shameful, but also detrimental to the education and growth of our children. As Frederick Douglass once said, "I say it with a sad sense of disparity between us. I am not..." I am not included within the pail of glorious anniversary. Your high independence only reveals the immeasurable distance between us. The blessings of justice, liberty, prosperity, and independence bequeathed by your fathers are shared by you, not me. The sunlight that brought light and healing to you has brought stripes and death to me. This Fourth of July
Thirty-second.
is yours, not mine. You may rejoice, but I must mourn." It is disappointing to see people who have a problem with history being taught. It is not Ruby Bridges who has a problem with history being taught accurately. It is the people who threw rocks at a six-year-old. It is for trying to simply go to school, whose grandchildren might learn and see their pictures and recognize their faces as they were throwing rocks at this little girl instead of take
Progress.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Shortly after sharing his thoughts, the black man said a white woman told him to leave the country. That's when Joseph Komarowski, the school board president, gave him a warning instead of asking the woman to le- leave. Uh, the black man was escorted out of the building. His removal was set with booze, was met. And many called for the white woman to be removed instead. Now, do we probably should go to a break and come back and maybe we'll watch the video and get some response? Or should, uh, so what we'll do is right now is say that we're, uh, watching Roland Martin Unfiltered here on the Black Star Network. And Sisters Lauren and Sisters Erica will certainly have a lot to say. We're gonna show this video of the man getting left out and we're gonna go to break. And when we come back, oh, we're gonna have a hot time in the old town, as Malcolm would say. Back in a moment here on the Black Star Network. Coming up on the next Black Table, a conversation with Professor Howard W. French on his new book, Born in Blackness, covering 600 years of global African history and helping us understand how the world we know today is a gift from black people.
There could have been no West without Africa and Africa.
That's on the next Black Table with me, Greg Carr, only on the Black Star Network. We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're gonna talk about it every day, right here on The Culture, with me, Faraji Muhammad, only on the Black Star Network.
I'm Jever Owens, America's Wealth Coach, and my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, a balanced life with Dr. Jackie.
What's up, y'all? I'm Will Packer. Everybody, it's your man Fred Hammond.
Hi, my name is Brisha Webb, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered. And, well, I like a nice filter usually, but we can be unfiltered.
Welcome back to Roland Martin Unfiltered here on the Black Star Network. Uh, when we left, we were, uh, we heard a very stirring excerpt from What to the Slave Is the Fourth of July from Frederick Douglass. A brother stood at the school board meeting and had some comments on the attempt to ban something that isn't even taught, critical race theory, uh, in the classroom out there in that California school district. And, uh, as we told you, uh, the school board president, Joseph Komarowski, instead of, uh, asking the woman who told the brother to leave the country to leave, he gave a warning to the brother who stood up and bravely confronted this foolishness. Uh, let's take a watch. Let's look, look at the video of, of that moment when the school board president asked the brother, uh, warns the brother instead of asking the person who should have been asked to leave to leave.
If I don't, if I feel that way, why don't I get out of the country?
Sir, that's your first warning. The second warning, you'd be, you'd be asked to leave.
She said, get out of the country. She told me to get out of town. My family has been here since August 16th, 1619.
Sir, that's enough.
And Jane Tannen, Hitler, Virginia. My family is here. We've been slaves for 400 years.
Jason, please escort this man out of the building. Thank you. If you would like, the whole auditorium can leave. That's the way we're gonna conduct.
Joe, that is, Joe.
We need order in the building, or I'll let everybody leave.
I object to that.
All right, 10-minute recess.
Said that to him.
10-minute recess.
She needs to be excused.
How dare you! You people are horrible!
Well, 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 my friends, what did we see there? Between that Instagram video and then looks like, uh, Joe there, Joe Komarowski, as he tucked in his manhood and began to stand, uh, it's like he read the room. The sister on the end is like, uh, hey, you need to put her out. Now, the five council members on the left seemed to sit there and pray for law enforcement. The sister showed up and there. But can somebody please, Lauren or, uh, or Erica, just please, what were we looking at? And, and we, like, what is this climate? Looks like the audience was really with the brother, but then again, it was kind of hard to decipher. Uh, Lauren, what you think about it?
Well, we're looking at a few things. Uh, we're looking at social hierarchy. He picked the white woman over the black male, no surprise, when he could have very easily have said, okay, both of you need to leave. You know, in fairness to him, he may not have heard what the woman said. Of course, the woman in the audience yells up at him and, and tells him what the woman said. He can clearly hear what the male, what the black male said, because the black male's yelling at him. Salute to that guy, by the way, who's from Virginia. My mother's from Virginia. We need more guys like you in Virginia. Um, but anyway, uh, there's some social hierarchy. I think we're also seeing, you know, in a more general sense, a sort of growing trend in this country of an inability for people to listen to people who they disagree with and be civil while they're listening to people they disagree with. Uh, in my line of works, uh, in the government, whether it was the federal government or the state government in New York or Virginia, uh, I've had to be in many meetings where I was listening to people I did not agree with. I sat there, I listened, it was civil, I lived, they lived, the world didn't end. I'm sure, uh, Erica and Greg, you probably saw on the news recently, Stanford Law School had an incident with a conservative judge named Kyle Duncan. Uh, he came, uh, at the request of the Federalist Society, uh, which is of course a very conservative group, uh, whether it be the student group or the national, a very conservative group. He was shouted down and kind of ran out of the, you know, he was run out of the room. He wasn't really allowed to talk. They shouted him down. I'm not a big, you know, fan of the Federalist Society. I thought it was totally wrong. I think you're in school to hear people's opinions. You know, you're, you're in school to learn things. Uh, you shouldn't feel, uh, so sensitive about somebody who may disagree or hearing somebody who may disagree vehemently with, that you can't hear it, you know? Uh, you know, there's that famous scene, uh, Erica and Greg and Malcolm X, where Malcolm X is coming out of the school. I, I don't know whether that's real or not, whether he probably did, I'm sure, address many colleges and, and universities. But I thought it was interesting and the white woman comes up to him and says, you know, what can I do as a white woman who believes in justice? And Malcolm, you know, Denzel Washington playing Malcolm turns and says nothing? I don't know if that ever actually happened, but I thought to myself, looking at that scene and also thinking about the James Baldwin video, I think he's at Oxford, and he has a famous argument with William F. Buckley. Uh, you know, he basically, Baldwin basically beats Buckley at that argument. Everybody's listening, everything's cool. We, we have a growing thing in this country now, though, of people not being able to listen to things they don't want to hear and shouting each other down. And that's primary, primarily what I think we just saw there. Uh, what Jonathan Haidt refers to as the coddling of the American mind. I think it's a growing trend. I, I think it's a dangerous trend, quite frankly. Even in cases where, you know, people are saying things I don't agree with, I do think it's a dangerous, particularly in academia. But this is a school board meeting. We're seeing this level of contentiousness in these school board meetings. I understand CRT, we understand that CRT is a fake convention. People understand that. At the same time, I think the way you beat people's ideas is with other ideas. You notice that, once he starts quoting Frederick Douglass is when, you know, everybody starts shifting in their seat, you know, because once you start getting closer to the truth, the truth has power, those words have a lot of power. You see what the result is. I always know in an argument where I'm winning, because people just start to shift, they start to interrupt. That's when you know you're ringing the bell. And, and he rang it. And it's just a very interesting thing to watch at this moment in our country. We have these changing demographics.
That's very true, Lauren. Yeah, I mean, we're in a state where I doubt of the two of them, whether Joseph Komarowski's ancestors or the guy he called to put him out have been in California longer than that man, since, you know. So, but, but, but it's very interesting, Erica, just listening to, to Lauren talk about this and think about how many things were going on in that moment. Um, the escalation, the potential that it could have turned into something else. The crowd was seen to back the brother and saying, put her out, put her out. And that white man threatened to put everybody out, but apparently in that moment, he thought better of it. What, how do you interpret what we were looking at there and, and, and what it says about where we are in this country in terms of the ability to listen to each other or to try to exert some authority to just impose our will?
Yeah, well, you know, we talked about this before with kind of like flamethrower words. So, you know, there's been a, um, a significant, um, portion of this country, 70-plus million that did vote for the son of a Klansman, that have really, um, been taught to really respond to specific words. And so, you know, the latest one is woke. Um, and so CRT has definitely been one that they have been trained to respond to. But, you know, be very clear that this has always been the path, that the protection of Carolyn Bryant is at all cost. So it was no surprise that he was warned and then effectively thrown out. And then the woman who made, uh, the, the inflammatory, uh, response to him, um, saying to get out of the country, um, which is laughable, um, was protected at all costs. But, you know, this really makes me think about the congressional hearings on gun violence. And this was really a powder keg moment, um, particularly when we see school boards across the country that are becoming more and more partisan, that people are having to declare the party that they belong to, that these are people that are effectively supposed to be making decisions about the safety, about the protection and the education of our kids. And so I think that we are on the precipice, um, of a very, very dangerous moment, just thinking about, you know, if there could have been one person that would have been in that room, God forbid, that at, you know, hearing voices elevated, a black man and a white woman could have began to, um, shoot. Um, it would have been, um, a much worse situation, uh, than what has unfolded at this moment. So I think that, you know, as we see the Mississippi, the Temeculas, as we see flamethrowing from social media that, and look at gun violence, that these are things that people need to be very, very conscious of. Um, you know, continuing turning points in the country where there's almost a point of no return.
Absolutely. Yeah, it seemed like the audience, once the brother had been moved or threatened with removal, they wanted the white woman out too, because she was still able to stay there. You know, i- it really does show that there are people who are willing to stand up. And it's funny, like you say, can protect Carolyn Bryant at all cost. The, the white woman stands up from the end of the table and comes over to talk to this guy. I mean, i- it's a complicated kind of calculus. You know, I was looking at something, uh, yesterday, Lauren, I was in a meeting, the National Council of Black Studies is meeting this weekend in Tallahassee, no, in, um, in Gainesville, University of Florida. That's what we have in our meeting. I'm going down there this weekend for the meeting. And there's some real angst there, because the state of California, of course, has banned travel, state-supported travel to places like Florida and other places where this has been put on the agenda. But one of the things that's upsetting is young black kids in California schools who want to take HBCU tours, because the state is threatening not to reimburse them for these tours and now they can't go to these campuses that they want to go. Any thoughts on how this CRT war may impact even in terms of federalism and, and, and trap people who are in some of these states from being able to engage in the kind of face-to-face dialogue that might ultimately, uh, prove beneficial?
Wow. I mean, that's where we get into a space where I think talking about, uh, boycotting and, you know, one of the languages that, that these people understand, I'm sure the Santas will understand it, is money, you know? Uh, but Florida, of course, so dependent on tourism and, and people visiting the state, that there's got to be a pathway in there, there's got to be a discussion about, I mean, I think anybody just floating the discussion would probably do it, particularly if it was one of our major civil rights groups. And I, and I understand that our civil rights groups, for the most part, are owned by corporate interests. I mean, we understand that. But at the same time, you know, any sort of rumor of discussion might get that going. But it all goes back to, uh, you have to, you have to win at the ballot box. And of course, the Florida Democratic Party currently is in shambles, but the, the pendulum always swings back. The demographics in, in Florida will allow them to at some point recover, at least on, on the left. The right is doing very well at beating them now. But, but, you know, I think frankly, the, the Gillum, the Gillum, the Andrew Gillum moment is what really scared them and got them galvanized. And it works both ways. What's happening right now in Florida will scare the Democrats and then they'll work harder. So until you fix that political problem, uh, we're gonna be having these discussions. But fortunately, these things don't, power doesn't last forever. Four-year terms don't last forever, two-year terms don't last forever. It just takes planning, organization, and some real tough talk about what has to get done.
Absolutely. Wise words. Uh, and when we come back, we're gonna probably stay in the South for a couple more stories. But we're gonna be back in a moment. Thank you, Lauren. Roland Martin Unfiltered here on the Black Star Network. We'll be right back.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, a white nationalist rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
As an angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol, we've seen.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at every university calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys, guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women. This is white fear.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives. And we're gonna talk about it every day, right here on The Culture, with me, Faraji Muhammad, only on the Black Star Network.
Hi, this is Cheryl Lee Ralph.
Hello, everyone, it's Kiara Sheard.
Hey, I'm Taj.
I'm Coco.
And I'm Lili.
And we're S W B.
What's up, y'all? It's Ryan Destiny, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
Welcome, welcome back to Roland Martin Unfiltered here on the Black Star Network. Remember to support the Black Star Network. Tell your friends, your family, wherever you are in the world, watching this over the top streaming network. Um, we're gonna stay in the South. We're gonna bring in Tennessee, we're gonna bring in Georgia, we're gonna bring in by proxy Alabama, and we'll probably even, uh, name-check South Carolina. Let's do these in rapid, robbing fashion, and then we'll get Erica and Lauren to comment on any of the stories. on any of the stories that resonate with them. First, from Tennessee. From the state of Tennessee, a FAMU graduate, her did her undergraduate at FAMU and did her doctorate, her MD in Ohio, is about to become Vanderbilt's first black woman neurosurgery resident. She's going to be in my hometown. Let's talk about some black girl and black boy magic that's happening. This sister will be the first in 148 years to put on the doctor's coat there, since the opening of the medical school in 1874. Tamaya Potter matched for a spot in the neurosurgery position at the university's medical center in Nashville, Tennessee on March 17, better known to medical students as National Match Day. Shout out to Maharry and Howard and the Morehouse School of Medicine, and Charles Drew, where they matched as well. Thousands of graduate medical students all over the country learned where they would go there and do their residency training for the next several years. Tamaya didn't believe it, so she had to call and confirm. Vanderbilt trained its first neurosurgery resident in 1932, making Potter the first black woman to join in 91 years. According to the Association of American Medical Colleges, only about 5.7% of physicians in the United States identify as black or African-American. The association found that there were only 33 black women in the neurosurgical field as of 2018. Let's go to Georgia, where a black editor was named to lead the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. The AJC named its first black editor, and it's 155-year history. It's a shame we doing these breaking, still breaking barriers at this late date. Leroy Chapman Jr. was announced as the new editor-in-chief after 12 years at the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. He's, so he's been serving as its managing editor since 2021. So as Lauren knows, he's been running the paper, so now he gets to be the editor. He will take charge of a new staff operating about over 125,000 print and digital subscribers and about 6 million unique online monthly visitors. Before coming to Atlanta, Chapman worked in South Carolina as a government editor at the state newspaper in Columbia and as a columnist and editorial writer at the Greenville News. The 30-year journalism veteran will succeed Kevin Riley, who plans to retire later this year. Our next story involving Amir Questlove Thompson, who is from Philly, but is people from Mobile, Alabama, as we found out, as he helped work on the documentary on the Cotilda there in Mobile. One of the nation's most celebrated artists has found another creative outlet. Grammy Award-winning artist Questlove is launching his own book imprint at MCD Books, which is a subsidiary of Pharrell Strauss-Guru, FSG. Named in honor of the late, of the late artist Prince, Awa Books, as in that bird called that Prince and Morris Day and Em used to do, will feature a mix of fiction and nonfiction that ranges from memoirs to books about music, history, and business. The first book to be released will be a memoir of the man, funk music icon Sly Stone. Of course, the title of the book, as we can all imagine, is about to be, "Thank You For Letting Me Be Myself Again," written with Ben Green. Next year, Questlove and Green will team up for another book, Hip Hop is History, an examination of hip hop's first 50 years. Questlove has already written several books on his own, including Mobeta Blues, Creative Quest, and Music is History. He also has a children's book on the way. Sisters, we're going to put one more conversation in the rotation, and this is coming from the current coach of the champion South Carolina Women's Basketball Program, Philly's finest, the great Dawn Staley. We probably all saw her walking up and down the sidelines with a Chaney University jersey on last week. South Carolina Women's Basketball Coach Dawn Staley decided to sport that jersey as some history in the Gamecocks' second round March Madness game against South Florida. Staley wore this white and blue, number 44 Chaney University jersey. Of course, not only is Chaney the nation's oldest historically black college and university, in 1982, its women's basketball team became the first and only HBCU to reach the Final Four of the NC2A tournament, ultimately falling to Louisiana Tech in the national championship game. Shout out to, of course, the great all-time coach of that team, who went to Iowa and then Rutgers, Vivian Stringer. She was the women's basketball coach, and next door, John Chaney was the men's basketball coach at Chaney at the time. During the post-game interview, Dawn Staley was asked to explain why she wore the jersey. I think we got some sound. I'd rather have her tell the story, if y'all don't mind, if y'all got it teed up. Yes, ma'am.
Tell us a little about your Chaney jersey.
Where you got that and, you know, why you decided to rep them today?
Oh, I just got this jersey. Somebody texted me and said they wanted to, they wanted to say, one of my friends texted me, asked me if I, if I wanted a jersey. They didn't really ask me to wear the jersey, and I was, of course, I mean, I like the jersey, I like what it stands for, I like that it's a Coach Stringer who just had her a birthday on March 17. Yolanda Lady, who wore this, not this jersey, but, she's from Philly, grew up, you know, she, she, she actually started leagues for us. Like, when I was younger, we played in something called the DBL, and she was very much a part of creating that league to give younger players an opportunity to just come together, play in the summertime. So fond memories of that. I mean, I mean, Chaney State was the only HBCU to make it to a Final Four, and for them to be led by Coach Stringer, who opened doors that now I walk through. I mean, it was a truly honor to wear this jersey and to represent them.
Sisters, I'm going to ask you all to have, if you have any comments on any of those stories. I do want to mention, of course, as we know, that when South Carolina won the national championship a couple of years ago, as we saw, Dawn Staley cut down the net and took a piece of that net and gave it to every black woman coach who was coaching right now, including their young sister at Ole Miss, who just won her game, because she said Carolyn Peck, when she won, became the first black woman, of course, to win the national championship. When they cut the net down, she sent her a string of it. And I should mention one other thing before I ask, Erica, maybe I ask you first, and then ask Lauren to comment, Lauren to comment on any of the stories. I want to mention, of course, congratulations to my friend and our sister, Yolanda Pierce, who is currently the dean of the Howard University School of Divinity. She will be also going to Vanderbilt. It was just announced yesterday, she's about to become dean of the divinity school at Vanderbilt University. So they're going to get some good old black theology, my friend Yolanda Pierce. So any, any thoughts on any of those stories, Erica?
I'm so glad that we are ending the show on black brilliance, because that is exactly who we are. But we see, you know, it's been 91 years since there have been a neurosurgeon in Vanderbilt's history. When we look at, you know, the AJC's history and having their first black editor, it is not because we have not qualified, we are in fact the blueprint, and that this is really more of a mark on the history of this country, and that through every level of oppression that our seeds still rise. When we see a Dawn Staley, who I have so much respect and honor for, she is such an amazing human being, and really, the way that she carries herself and cares for her team is something to be spoken about. I would always think about, you know, if she maybe looked a different way, that, you know, there would be wall-to-wall coverage up here, but, you know, I digress. We, I feel like, should know that in the culture that she is so important to see and that her influence will continue. She's really, and many other black coaches have really reshaped the way the game is looked at, in the way that players play, and really the way players empower themselves, at least at the collegiate level and beyond. So it is just so wonderful to see that through every lever of oppression that folks throw at us, that still the seeds rise. So it's just wonderful to end the show on such black brilliance.
Absolutely, absolutely. And while you mentioned Dawn Staley, Erica reminded me, as an adopted Philadelphian myself, we can't, I'd be remiss if I didn't shout out Dobbins High School, Dobbins Tech, which of course is her alma mater, also the alma mater of Hank Gathers, who we also remember. So Dawn Staley got nothing but love from Philadelphia. So Lauren, you know, and then I was thinking about, kind of, please, on any of the stories. I was thinking particularly about that AJC story, because, you know, what are we talking about when you put somebody as a captain of a ship when the print media doesn't seem to have figured out where it's going? I mean, please, anything on any of the stories, but I just thought about you as we thinking about that, because I know it's tough times out there for, for regional and local media.
Very tough times because of Google and Facebook stealing all the ad money, basically, basically monopolizing all the ad money. But that Leroy Chapman story is a big thing. You know, 155 years, the Atlanta Journal-Constitution is 155 years old. I think the Washington Post is 157 years old, never had a black editor. They, they passed over Eugene Robinson, and in my view, passed over Kevin Merida, who's now the editor of the LA Times. So to see Leroy Chapman be at the top of the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, which is a storied paper, of course, in Atlanta, the mecca, and that's, that's a really amazing thing, because it's rare, very rare, that a black person is controlling the content of what goes on one of these platforms. I mean, the Washington Post right now doesn't even have a black person on their editorial board. It's an eight-person, I think, editorial board at the Post. And the city that some have referred to as Chocolate City, still majority black, though barely, and so for Atlanta to do this is huge. I mean, it is huge. I cannot tell you, as somebody who's been, you know, worked at USA Today and ABC News, you get in these bigger newsrooms, and the higher you get, the whiter it gets, and usually the mailer it gets. There is a woman who is a top editor at the Post and at Associated Press right now, but there's never been a black person in charge at the Associated Press or the Washington Post. New York Times has actually done it, I think, twice, right? But even that isn't really, I mean, I think this guy, just looking at him, I don't know Leroy Chapman at all, I'll probably meet him at some convention, whatever. I don't know him at all, but I got to tell you, I'm sure he put in the time there to get to that position, because it ain't easy. It ain't easy at all. So, so that's great to see that, that's very interesting. Let's see what direction he goes to paper and see if he's kinfolk. We'll find out pretty soon.
So that's right. Well, we're going to wind ourselves to a close tonight, and of course, as always, it's such an honor and a pleasure to be with both of you, with Lauren Victoria Burke and Erica Savage. And thank you all, everybody in the control room, every. So we're going to end here, because you all made sure that nothing collapsed, and you are, as always, the backbone of the Black Star Network. So join us again tomorrow here on the Black Star Network for Roland Martin, Unfiltered, and we'll see everybody tomorrow. Everybody stay safe.
Folks, Black Star Network is here.
Hold no punches!
I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland. Hey, black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, there's a difference between Black Star Network and black-owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black-owned media and be skating.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Pull up a chair, take your seat, the Black Tape, with me, Dr. Greg Carr, here on the Black Star Network. Every week, we'll take a deeper dive into the world we're living in. Join the conversation, only on the Black Star Network.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie.
We're all impacted by the culture, whether we know it or not. From politics to music and entertainment, it's a huge part of our lives, and we're going to talk about it every day, right here on The Culture, with me, Faraji Mohammed, only on the Black Star Network.
I'm Deborah Owens, America's Wealth Coach, and my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.